We'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome you all here this morning. This is the Weaver County Commission hearing or meeting, 11th day of June 2019. We welcome you all here. Our invocation this morning will be given by Roger Brunker, pledge of allegiance by Tammy Aitlot. Aitlot, thank you. I appreciate that. And thought of the day by me.
Father which art in heaven, as we meet in the capacity of this commission meeting, we give thanks for the opportunity of being here, especially to have the freedoms we have to participate in the processes of our government, to have the opportunity to voice our opinions. And grateful, Father, for those who have chosen to serve in the community and in our nation as elected officials. We pray for them, Father, and ask that they will serve with dignity and honor and that they might seek wisdom and guidance from Thee in the decisions which they are asked to make. We are grateful, Father, for the freedoms we enjoy and those who have chosen to protect us in the armed services and that Thy blessings will be with them to protect and keep them safe, and also that Thy blessings will be with their families as they are away, that they will be under Thy watchful care. We thank Thee, Father, for those who have served in the past to protect the great freedoms and liberties which we enjoy and ask that we always keep them in remembrance and honor them in the sacrifice which they made. We pray now for Thy Spirit to be with us as we go throughout this meeting and say these things in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Tammy and Roger. We appreciate you. My thought of the day has to do with my little vacation I just took. Once a year, I take my oldest grandkids that are in high school, and we go on a grandpa's adventure for a couple of days. And this, I had a cold, so normally we take some pretty tough little hikes and get out and do some things, but this year I couldn't go too far, so we went down to, because of this cold. So we went down and did a deal called Wolf's Creek Canyon. And it's in the Grand Staircase Escalante. And it was a slot canyon that we did. It was about five miles in and out. And when we did this, it was interesting. You get down in here and you're able to take your grandkids with you and walk down these canyons. And there's people there from all over the world, all over the world. And it's hard to believe that you could, that these slot canyons are literally at our fingertips. In this case, we walked about three-eighths of a mile to get there. So it was just a couple hundred yards up the road. And we got into here, and there was people riding horses down that slot canyon. Some of those were so close, I don't know how the horse got through, but they did. And you look at that, and it's absolutely wonderful what we can do if you take the time to do it, if you just take the time to get out of your homes and go do some of these things. It was amazing. Anyway, I had a really good time with my grandkids, and it was a wonderful little adventure we went on. But, you know, we have the, we had the mighty five, now we've got the mighty six, the sexy six, whatever you want to call it, with the new national park that Representative Bishop created up there in Fox Elder County now with, yeah, the Golden Spike. Anyway, it's really good. So I'd recommend that you get out and look at some of these places that we can go. They're wonderful. They're just wonderful. You just need to take the time to get off our dead butts and go do it. All right. With that, we'll go into public comments. We give you a chance to comment to the commission prior to our meeting getting started, in case there's something you'd like to talk to specifically that we're dealing with today. So we actually have a few people here today. It's good to see you. So it's now your time. If there's anybody here who would like to come and comment to the commission, please feel free to come on up and talk to us. Nobody's moving, so I assume there's nobody wants to talk to us today. All right, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, and that's our consent items. First items are the requests for approval of the warrants. We sent and went through these this morning. The first one is warrant 1823 through 1830, and warrants 439-973 through warrants 440107 for the, in the amount of $732,305. Second is approval for the purchase orders that we buy, and they're $119,897. We had some questions there this morning, but they was able to work their way through them. Request for ACH payments to U.S. Bank for our P cards in the amount of $170,570. Request for approval of the minutes from our meeting on June 4th. Request for the change orders 001 between Weaver County and Yesco Sign Company. This is for the sign down on the sheriff's complex. Request for approval of change order 002 between Weaver County and Yesco Sign Company on that same sign. Request for approval of local consent.
Local consent?
I have to ask, is it a search and audit?
It's, I've got, I know what it is.
Okay.
Could you explain that? Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a beer license up there in the electric alley.
This wasn't typed in all the way, it's a beer license. Okay, request for approval of change order number one between Weaver County Library and Saunders Construction for site utility improvements on the Ogden Valley Library. A request for approval of retirement agreements by and between Weaver County and Kira Atmore. So those are our consent items today. Any questions on those, commissioners?
Let me, let me make sure I state that correctly. There was one, you got it, Country Corner and then the Electric Power, the 14th to the 16th of June was your question, Commissioner, those two things.
Very good, I'm open for a motion.
I'm good. Do you want to have him explain that?
Yeah, Ricky, you got anything you want to explain on the payments or the?
No, you bet. So this week, our 20 purchase orders for $120,000, about half of that amount are $61,000 for the library. That will purchase a computer as well as some labeling and engraving and embroidery equipment for their Makerspace program that's purchased with state funds, with a state grant. 25% of that amount are $30,000 is for the conference center, and that's primarily for food and labor. 16% are $19,000 is vaccines for the health department. And then 8% or $10,000 is for our Golden Spike event center, primarily was for garbage service and manure. 143 checks we issued this week for $732,000. One half of that amount, or $363,000, is for Weaver Human Services. That's our monthly contribution. And 20%, or $146,000, was for the library, and that is primarily for cataloging subscription for the year as well as some books. And then 8%, or $58,000, is for the fleet, and that was Sheriff Motorcycle Lights as well as the purchase of two trailers. Back on the Weaver Human Services, that amount is much higher this month than it has been in the past. Their budget was increased, the amount that we were contributing to them for 2019, and for some reason, we never gave them the additional amount. So this is catch-up payment for the first five months that we missed out.
Very good.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion approved.
Second.
Very good. We have motion approved and a second. Before I call for that motion, I questioned this engraving equipment. You know, we had a big deal on this morning, dug down in, and when I dug down into the budget, sure enough, it was there. It was our part of a...
The library.
Uh-huh. It was a grant they'd received, and I was our, half of it, our part of it. Anyway, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. That's approved. So I might mention in there that after our refusal to approve some deals last week because the amounts didn't match, Ricky and Scott have got together with us and come up with a new format to approve these warrants. And we appreciate that, and I want you to know that. The very first one, the last half of this one came through this time, and we'll see these from now on, and makes them easier to read. So we thank you, Ricky. We appreciate that. Very good. Okay, under action items, a request for approval for ratification of bids from the Weaver County tax sale on May 23rd. Roger, tell us about this.
Commissioners, a brief background of tax sales since we have a new commissioner. Utah Code 592-1351 directs the auditor of a county to hold an auction for any property tax that has at least a five-year or longer delinquency. This is to be held in May or June, to be determined by the county auditor of each year. Weaver County, as a general rule, we have, we start out with between 200 and 300 properties. This year, we were fortunate to only have to begin with 181. When I say fortunate, that's a lot of properties still to have to go through. After meeting the legal requirements per code of sending out notifications, certified mail to lien holders, the county auditor's office really digs in, and we do an intensive search. A lot of these people aren't aware of the tax sale because they've either moved or they choose to ignore it and don't sign for their certified letters. So we do an intensive search to try to notify these people, locate them. We actually stop by if there's a building on there and knock on doors, try to get any kind of information we can so that we can let people know they're in jeopardy of losing the property. We don't want them to do that, and we want to work with them to do anything we can to save the property, if indeed they want to save the property. In all of that, we meet with the recorder's office, the assessor's office, the treasurer's office. We try to get the characteristics of the property down so that we know what the property is like, what kind of assessments are on the property. Also, if there's been any part payments for the delinquencies on the property, sometimes that helps us to notify people that, you know, have made payments, but they don't realize they're in that dire of a need to get those paid in full. So we appreciate all of the work that is done on behalf of the other offices. And commissioners, I know you've heard this before, but you're very fortunate to have a county that all the offices play really well together. I've been here for a number of years, and sometimes it doesn't happen that way. So we're very, very fortunate to have a good crew that works well together, and we certainly appreciate their help in all of that we do. And I'm glad to see Cortland here. I was going to give a shout out. Usually, he doesn't preside at this, but Cortland is our tax sale guru attorney. It amazes me every year that we can come up with some new bizarre legal issue on the tax sale. And so all I have to do is pick up the phone, and Cortland gives me case history in law and supports what we're going to do. So we appreciate Mr. Erickson and all that he does to help us. After the actual tax sale, individuals have 10 days to contest the sale if they feel like there was something done inappropriately or wrong, or they're just upset about the sale. That would be submitted to the Weaver County Commission in writing, and then you would have the opportunity to investigate that and see if there's any legitimate claim for them contesting the sale. I haven't heard anything from the commission office. I checked before this meeting and haven't heard of anyone contesting this year. Am I wrong in that? Have you, anybody contested that you're aware of?
We're aware of.
That's what we like to hear. So that's good. We can go on now. Of the properties, I think you have a list in front of you. There are eight of them. Of the eight, three were not bid on. People didn't have any interest in those, and so they were struck off to the county per code. So the county will now take possession of those properties. The other five, once they are ratified, we will prepare and record a deed transferring. It's a tax sale deed transferring our interest in the property to whoever was the successful bidder on that property. And then that, once it's recorded, will be, the deed will be mailed to the individuals. Also, just so everyone is aware, some of these properties, obviously you'll notice, were bid above the actual tax amount. Some people have the misconception that the county makes money off of this sale. We do not. We are only allowed to keep that money, which is the taxes, the interest penalties, and tax sale fees. Anything that is bid over and above that amount, excuse me, is then expunged to the State Department of Unclaimed Property in the name of the owner of the property, and that way the owner can go and claim any excess money for the bid of the property.
So Roger, why do we expunge that to the state? Why don't we send that directly to the people whose property we've taken?
We have in the past, and we still do that if we are 100% sure that we know that that is the owner of the property. There are sometimes issues that come up, however, when there's an et al and others in the property, and there are multiple owners. Who do we, who do we then give that to? The one owner, or do we divide it equally among all the owners? So it's been recommended that we expunge the entire amount to the state and let the state make that determination.
Okay, but if we know who it is, we give it to them?
If we know, if it's like a single owner or a couple, and we're very aware of that, the treasurers in the past, I don't know what their current recommendations are, but in the past, they have been able to do that, yes.
Very good. Well, when I look at this, people think that maybe the county wants this property. We don't want this property, just so you know. We had Devron yesterday meet with us in the morning, and he showed us 1,800 parcels that we own, that are all small little things, just like this. And this is how we get them. So we got five, or...
Three more.
Yeah, three more that we now have. And we just don't want them. Yeah, anyway, it's a... All right. Thank you very much, Roger. We appreciated it. Questions, commissioners?
Now, Roger, you know, Roger did talk about how people get along, but I would submit to all of them getting along, and especially to Roger. You guys are good communicators. You're fair, and you're, you guys are really, really good at what you do. So communicating as well as everything else, your competency. And of course, Roger, you're the, you've been here for a lot of years. You've been just one that helps find a way to get things done, and I respect and appreciate that. So when you said that, I know that you have a lot to do with that, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that.
I'll make a motion with that?
I'll make a motion that we ratify the bids from Weaver County on the tax sale held on the 23rd.
And I would second that, Roger. I'd also, as Commissioner Jenkins mentioned, we had a discussion yesterday on these 1,800 that we do own. I never have been a believer that it's government's job to hold property, that that needs to be in taxpayers' hands so we can collect dollars on it. There were some discussions on the best way to go about offloading these 1,800. We'd like your input, or I'd like your input, as far as some discussions. We've met with Mr. Wilkinson on that. I think this is an issue that we need to address sooner than later and resolve how we're going to go about doing this, because this has not been a cure itself unless we take some action to make sure these properties are offloaded from Weaver County. And I would like, you know, I'd like your opinion as well as some of the other people that have handled this on an annual basis.
I would be more than happy to help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. We appreciate it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Item two is approval for an agreement by between Weaver County and Alpha Counseling and Treatment to provide substance abuse therapy for the Weaver County Correctional Facility. Lieutenant Lopez.
Thank you.
Good to have you here today.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for having me. My name is Philip Reese. I'm a lieutenant with the Weaver County Sheriff's Office. I stand before you this morning to seek approval for a contract between Weaver County and Alpha Counseling. The contract was awarded to them following the county RFP process and procedures. It will be paid for by the inmate benefit fund at this time. The inmate benefit fund is generated by inmate services such as telephones and commissary. So by the very definition of the fund, I can't think of a lot of better ways to benefit inmates than to provide substance abuse counseling for them and therapy while they are incarcerated. We are further currently exploring grant opportunities for future use of this program as this program may expand as we experiment and look into the future trying to provide services to the inmates that we provide for. This is a step forward to carry out Sheriff Arban's goal of successful output. We've seen a need for the service following the failure of the Freedom Project and the JRI programming, and took this responsibility upon ourselves to provide this for the inmates we take custody of. I would be happy to field any questions or concerns that you gentlemen have at this time.
Questions?
Just a question, Lieutenant. So in my discussions with the sheriff's department, there has been good results based on outcomes with your, this Alpha Consoling Treatment. And I know that Weaver Human Services was involved with that discussion at some point. So I'm assuming that you're, you've gone through your procedures well enough to know that this is the provider that's going to give the best outcomes for the county?
Yes, sir. It was a competitive bid process.
Okay, so it was competitive. And then who made the determination on that? Did you have a committee or?
Yeah, with, along with the purchasing department here at Weaver County. We had a committee, Mr. Horn, and came down and conducted that meeting, and we...
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We appreciate that. Commissioner, Lieutenant Reese, we appreciate it. So I need a motion to approve that.
So move. I'll second it.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Opposed? None. Very good. Thank you. Request for approval of memorandum of understanding by Weaver County and State of Utah Department of Natural Resources to accept an award of a grant for an indoor archery facility with multiple, multipurpose space. Jennifer Graham.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
This is a memo of understanding between the county and the DNR for the grant award that they, that we were, that we received for $750,000. We were able to secure that because we had the $250,000 from the Governor's Office of Economic Development. So that brings the funding up to $1 million, and then in addition, we have $290,000 from Ramp to bring our total budget up to just under $1.3 million for the construction. The next item on the agenda is going to be the actual bid for the contract for the construction of that shell. Then we'll just need to do the fit and finish, the sewer, the road, parking lot, and so. Still working on some more fundraising, but we're getting there.
Very good. Questions?
No, I'd like to, just for the public, how did this all come to be? How did, not just the building, but what was this ground 30, 40 years ago, and now it's evolved to this? If you could just give a, just a short, brief history so people understand, we just didn't, you know, how did this all come to be?
So this facility will be located just down off of F Avenue, near the Cargill Plant, in what, as part of Observatory Park, really. And it's in the section of Observatory Park that the sand was taken to cap the landfill when it was capped there, you know, closer to A Avenue and E Avenue and such. So it has kind of left an indentation down there, which is, we currently have a 16-station, 20-target field archery range located down there. So this will be in addition to that, and will be able to use, be able to be used in conjunction with it. Archery component fits well into the West Ogden Community Plan, and this facility will have indoor lanes, outdoor lanes, and more 3D targets is currently what's on the slate for it. The committee that was formed back in 2013 that helped raise some of this money was formed to help bring about, and look into the feasibility of property for shooting complexes. So...
Committee, the committee made up of mainly?
Mainly firearms enthusiasts, but...
Not elected officials?
No, not elected officials. But the shooting range that's out at, in kind of the northern part of Ogden on Roulan White, it also was brought about as part of this committee's feasibility study, so...
Very good.
Very good.
Jennifer, could you just clarify for me that, so the amount that we basically have now in the bank, or will have shortly in the bank, is enough to cover our construction costs?
Close. We're not exactly sure what the, we're still working on the numbers for the road and the parking lot, but we have some options because of the way it's zoned. We don't necessarily have to asphalt the entire parking lot. But we are working on fundraising so that it's not county CIP money that's going toward this. It will be donations of one type or another.
Okay, so we will be using out some outside money, not county money, to complete it if necessary, and we may very well have that donated by the time that pavement, etc., is ready.
Yes, we're still working on that. We also have had a great partnership with Granite Construction, who has given us a lot of value and kind for groundwork.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I think it's important for the citizens to understand that a good share of this is donated money and comes from outside sources. And I really believe this will be a great venue asset for the county moving forward for this archery range.
Yes.
I think we're going to attract a lot of attention.
Well, and I want to point out on this, and that's a great point, Commissioner, but I want to point out when you talk about outside money, those who hunt or those who participate in any type of sporting event, especially with archery, when they buy a license currently or have been buying a license, there's a little small fee or a buck or some portion of a dollar that's gone into a fund. And over time, those funds generate a little bit of money, and it's through, in part, some of those funds that are now being kicked back into the community, and that's what's paying for it, not property tax dollars as could be argued. So it's actually coming for those who use the sport, and great way to use public facilities that are, that was an old landfill, basically, an old landfill just sitting there. And so, and now it'll be able to, an all-access sport for people of all abilities. It doesn't, you know, that's the wonderful thing about archery is it gets people out, moving, and they can be in a wheelchair, or they can be walking, they can be young, old, tall, short, fat, skinny, it doesn't matter, any ability or type. I'm really looking forward as at another, an all-type of access thing for people in Weaver County on things like this to help bring or perpetuate the sport.
Right, right. It really is, as we discussed with Gary Cook with the DNR yesterday, it really is more of an archery park that we're going to have instead of just an archery range, very much adding to very much a community accessibility, so...
We don't have a lot of competition in that regard, do we, Jennifer?
No, we don't. In fact, this is kind of a priority of DNR because they view this as something just really unique for this region, so...
Okay, I like it.
Very good. I'm open for a motion.
So move. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the MOU, memorandum of understanding between Weaver County and the DNR, State of Utah, for the construction of this range. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, hear none, so we're there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Well, next up is Todd Ferrario, and he's here for a request of approval of a contract by him between Weaver County and Wasatch West Contracting LLC for the construction of that very building we just had the conversation on. Todd?
Thank you, gentlemen. As you stated, this is step one. So we were given the vision of the archery complex and now turning that into a park. We went through the bid process, and to echo what Roger said, when you do a project like this with the county, not only are we starting with purchasing and getting the bid process in place, but the health department has been on site looking at septic systems, sewer, what we do for that. We've had Gary and Brayden and his whole team with Chad Meyerhofer from step one looking at the feasibility, where we can put things, what the road looks like, what parking looks like, giving us some spatial ideas of what would fit out there. Craig Brown and his team with the building inspection, because that most likely will be handed off from Ogden City to the county to do self-inspection. So it has been a team effort. Bid process was great. We had 25 different contractors show up at our mandatory construction meeting, so pretty thorough process in the bids. We started with, I like to say, a napkin drawing, and got some very basic idea. It is a steel building, so this contract is for the shell itself, footings, foundation, and slab. Phase two will be the F, F, and E, and the interior space.
Very good. Questions?
No questions.
Pretty plain and simple. You know, it was interesting, this was about to die, and we got in there as a group and decided, look, let's just build the shell, and we'll get the building up, and then we can start worrying about how we're going to finish it. And once we decided to do that, it comes together just like that. Thanks, Todd. We appreciate your efforts here.
No problem. No problem.
All right, need a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the contract between Weber County and the Wasatch West Contracting LLC for construction of the archery building shell at Observatory Park.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
It approved. Thanks, Todd. Next item up, number five, is a request for approval of an agreement by him between Weber County and Union Pacific Railroad for a permit to bore under the tracks at 7500 West. Gary Meyer.
Morning, Commissioners.
This has to do with the drain ditch down there, doesn't it?
Sure does, sure does. So, we're getting ready to construct the final improvements to this section of 12th Street. As such, we wanted to increase our ability to move stormwater around out there. As you're all aware, that area is very flat. In some cases, ditches are pushing water both directions. But what we'd like to do is bore an additional storm drain line under Union Pacific's railroad tracks, their main line there on 7500 West, which will allow us to move more stormwater runoff, melt, snow melt, what have you, south out of the area. So, farmers are able to use their fields more effectively.
So, this is just helping the farmer? This, this is an action that would help people with the Western way of life?
It'll help people and it'll help us as the county, too. We currently don't really have a good way of getting stormwater south down 7500 West. And this will greatly increase our ability to do so, so.
Terrific. My question, will it flow?
Absolutely, yeah. It will flow.
Like you said, it's pretty flat. I'm somewhat familiar with that 7500 West.
Yeah.
That is a good way to take it, by the way, because you have some wetlands out toward the, toward the bay there that would work if you can get it there.
Absolutely. And we've actually spoken with Rich Hansen from the DNR. He's very excited that we're doing this. This, you know, it won't just be a one-time event. You know, as stormwater happens, as storms happen through the season, they'll continually get water to, to help supply that well and with this. But, but yes, in answer to your question, Commissioner, it will flow and it will allow us to utilize portions of existing channels and ditches and then add to it with this extra crossing under the tracks.
So, I'm assuming that'll take it from 900 south and move it south? Will it move? So, if you go west of 75, does the flow come east from that direction or where's it going to go?
So, the way we've got things laid out with the improvements that are going in, 7500 West is almost kind of a high point now.
Okay.
So, water will flow either west or east. And as such, it, it will flow east, then cross the road, come back, then come back west and down 7500 and flow south.
And flow south?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. I just want to make sure that we've put enough thought into this that we're not going to have issues out there with people criticizing us for putting drains to nowhere.
You know, there's always people that ask questions and we appreciate that. And we've, we've actually worked with a lot of the different land users out there, farmers, whatnot, to try to come up with the, the design that we have.
Okay, thank you.
You betcha.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, Gary, this is going to be a steel casing, right? You'll put underneath there?
It will be.
So, can handle the.
Yeah. It'll be what they call a jack and bore of a steel casing and then that'll allow us to feed our lines through it, correct?
I bet. Very familiar then. All right, I'm open for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make, I'll make the motion based on the recommendation by our engineers that we request the approval agreement by between Weber County and the Union Pacific Railroad Company for a permit to bore under the railroad tracks 7500 West.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thanks, Gary.
Perfect, thanks, gentlemen.
Appreciate that. Next item, number six, is a request for approval of an interlocal agreement by between Weber County and Marriott Sladeville City to comply with the requirements of an MS4 permit for hiring the executive director for the Golden Spike Stormwater Advisory Coalition. Mr. Brayden Felix, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good.
So, this is going to be, this one as well as Roy City are going to be some of the last interlocal agreements you'll be hearing from me. We are very close to getting our executive director hired for the coalition that will help us make sure that we're all complying with the MS4 permit correctly and equally. And now, here we are with Marriott Sladeville and Roy Cities, or Marriott Sladeville first.
You bet. Very good. Questions, Commissioners? How about a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion.
Commissioners, it is resolution 33.
33. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Fattima?
Commissioner Harvey.
Aye.
Commissioner Fror.
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins.
Aye. Very good. So, the next item up is the same thing, only it's between Weber County and Roy City for the exact same thing. Brayden, anything new about that one?
Nope, exact same.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the same interlocal agreement by him between Weber County and Roy City for the Golden Spike Stormwater Advisory Coalition.
Check them.
It's resolution 34.
Resolution 34.
Commissioner Harvey.
Aye.
Commissioner Fror.
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins.
Aye. Very good. That's approved. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Brayden, we appreciate that. Next item is number eight, approval of final reading of a Fee Ordinance Amendment relating to Weber County Community Development Department Solid Waste Division. Sean Wilkinson.
Thank you, Commissioners. You heard this last week. Bill presented the first reading. But this is an increase in the general waste tipping fee at the transfer station, which brings it from 3949 per ton to 4049 per ton. 51 cents of that is the 1.9% CPI increase required by our contract with Republic Services. The other 49 cents per ton is for operational increases at the transfer station. Now, last week, there was a question about the Freon removal that was going to happen. We have had some clarification. And Blooms Recycling is going to collaborate with us on a one-year agreement where they will actually take the refrigerators and remove the Freon themselves. So, that saves the county the cost of removing Freon. So, in the ordinance, you'll see that we, if, if the county has to handle the refrigerator and remove the Freon, the fee remains at $15 per refrigerator, per unit. But if by agreement, the county, or the Freon is removed at no cost to the county, it will be $10 per unit. And that $10 covers the county's cost just to receive and then transport that unit to Blooms.
Very good. Questions, Commissioners?
Does, I have one question. Does it, so, simply put, how does it, will it? This helps Weber County.
It does, yes.
Does it negatively impact any persons who would do, would bring a refrigerator to Weber County?
No. No, it doesn't at all. In fact, if this agreement is in place, it will save them $5.
So, this is another measurement that government is actually helping citizens of Weber County?
That is correct.
I just wanted to be clear on that.
That's good. Thank you, Commissioner.
With that, Mr. Chair, you ready for a motion?
I am.
Now that we have that clarified.
I would move to approve the final reading of the Fee Ordinance Amendments relating to Weber County Community Development Department Solid Waste Division as presented by Mr. Wilkinson this morning.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
This is a resolution.
It's an ordinance 10. Commissioner Harvey.
Aye.
Commissioner Fror.
Aye.
Chair Jenkins.
Aye. Thanks, Fattima.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Finally, on the action items, request for approval of a contract by him between Weber County and Avea Converge One to update hardware and call manager software to current versions. Quinn Fires, you're always messing around doing something, Quinn.
I try and lay low, but it doesn't always work. This is a refresh of our phone system, basically the backend infrastructure gateways. We've put this off over, I think it's over 12 years old. And this year, it's end of service life, so we can no longer get maintenance on it. We've negotiated the price down to where we feel good about it. And this should take us far into the future.
Very good. Questions, Commissioners?
I don't have any questions.
No questions. I just want to give a shout-out, though, to Quinn. He talks about cost savings. I had a meeting with him this morning and gave me a couple different examples of where his department is really taking a business approach and, and not a government approach with sometimes you ask for discounts from vendors, even in the state procurement, and, and they're receiving those. So, it doesn't hurt to ask for a little better deal.
For sure.
Even though we're using taxpayer dollars in some case, and I would say that, especially since we're using taxpayer dollars, we should take that stance. And Quinn's done a great job of that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Quinn. We appreciate that. Very good. Motion?
I would really like to have Mr. Flowers be still standing at the lectern before we make the vote, but that's fine. I'll make a motion that we approve the contract by him between Weber County and Avea Converge One to update the hardware and the call manager software to the current version.
I'll second that.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. That's unanimous. Thank you, Quinn. That was great. Next item is a public hearing. I need a motion to adjourn this meeting and convene into a public hearing.
So move. Check them.
All, all in favor, say aye.
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 Very good. So, this public hearing is to consider and take action on a request to vacate public utility easement to the west of Weber Industrial Park. Lots 19, 20, 21, and Lot 2 of G subdivision measuring 35 feet and reestablished a public easement 10 feet in that width. Tammy?
Good morning, Commissioners.
A lot?
Yes, sir.
Tammy, go ahead.
We have an existing 35-foot public utility and drainage easement, which was originally established for a water line in there. That water line has since been abandoned. And the applicant has requested to vacate 25 of those 35 feet, so there would still be a 10-foot utility easement. We have letters from all of the utility and water companies involved, and they have all given their consent to be able to do this. And so, that is the request before you this morning.
Commissioners, do you have any questions regarding this?
I just wondered why it was ever 35 feet? That seems fairly large for a utility easement. Do you know?
There was a, it was a utility and a drainage easement. So, originally, there were plans to have a sizable water line through there.
Okay, so it did make sense at that time.
Correct.
Commissioner?
So, I don't mean to make light of this. So, this is really government giving back to the people who own the property so that they have the property. Is that right?
Yes.
I just checking. Wonderful things you learn from right here. Appreciate that.
Good. That makes me happy, doing that. Is there anybody that's come to comment today at this public hearing or would like to on this piece? You know, I'm very much, I agree with you, too. Very much in favor of this property being where it's supposed to be in the hands of the public and the private owners. Very good, Tammy. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. All right, part of this public hearing, and we can vote on these all at once, but the next part is to consider a request to amend the general plan, future land use of the industrial park to residential ag at the intersection of 900 South and 7900 West. Steve Burton.
Hi, Commissioners. What you have before you today is, yeah, we have got a general plan amendment
What you have before you today is, we have got a general plan amendment to amend the future land use map, and then after this, there's also a rezone request. And just to give you kind of a little bit of backstory on this, you may remember, it was later last year, there was a rezone in this area, which shifted some A2 property and some M1 property. What happened with that is one of the applicants didn't realize that that was going to happen, they had some of their property rezoned to manufacturing, which isn't what they wanted. So this request is a county-driven request to amend the general plan, and if you've got your staff reports, I can kind of just show you exactly what's changing on the general plan if you'd like. It would actually, so it's under the file number GPA 2019-01. We have what you'll see as the current future land use map, and there is a purple area which, of the general plan, which shows this area as industrial. In order to make this rezone meet the general plan, we've had to amend the general plan, which is why...
So is this the part in yellow that you have a small square in there that says rezoned to residential?
No, sorry. That area is still on the general plan.
Okay.
It's actually just to the north of that, you'll see the little dashed line, the little L shape.
Uh-huh.
That is what is being changed. It's not being rezoned, but we're just changing on the general plan to show as residential slash agricultural in the future. That is what this request is for you today. To let you know, the planning commission on May 14th of this year recommended that this proposal be approved, and it has been non-controversial, where, you know, a lot of times, general plan amendments and rezones may be quite controversial, this has been non-controversial. We have done noticing and everything required by state law, so.
So if you, Commissioners, remember, this came before, it was before, and then there was a mistake made on this.
That's what it was.
We can, we insisted that they fix it, so this is the fix. Any questions?
Yeah. So if you look at this plat with the purple and the, where you show that the L shape, I guess my question is this, so what you're showing the purple is currently M1?
That is correct, yeah, and just looking at, I'd had to refer to my zoning map really quick, correct.
And so, yeah, so it appears then, we're going, we're having, creating a section in here in between three sections of M1 that will now be A2. Is there, to me, that doesn't make a lot of sense from the standpoint of consistent zoning.
So the idea is to give the people that have their current property M1, who want it to be M1, the ability to keep it M1.
Okay.
But in the future, if they do want to expand, I mean, they're kind of stuck with that zoning in their properties. This rezone that's coming before you after this general plan amendment is only for a few of these properties, as a few of these citizens want their property to be agricultural. But you're correct, there will be some areas where we'll have agriculture and M1. It will be inconsistent, but the idea is hopefully to have this in the future, have the manufacturing pushed closer to 7900 West.
Yeah, which makes sense. And so is this a request by the property owner?
Yeah, I think Commissioner Jenkins kind of alluded to, there were some property owners that approached the commission, and this is actually county-driven.
Yeah, these guys were included in a previous rezone by accident.
Okay.
And so we're taking them back out now.
This particular section?
Right, and we're taking them back out.
Okay, all right, so basically they're in favor of this?
Right.
Okay.
But we're fixing a mistake.
Yeah, just, as I look at this, you know, most areas wouldn't create a second island, if you will, in between three sections of M1, even though it does border a little bit on some A2. Probably doesn't make a lot of difference in the future when they decide they want to, really, this is probably not a residential location for the future, I would think it'd be more manufacturing at some point.
Well, so, I mean, the idea would be...
May not be in my lifetime, but...
Yeah, the idea would be just to take this L shape and take it out, so that it is no longer manufacturing, and maybe to keep the manufacturing more towards 8300, but...
Okay, I get it, okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody in the audience who came to comment today on this public hearing for this piece of property?
Well, I'm here, but I don't have a comment as long as it gets approved.
Very good, that's fine. All right, thank you very much. Steve, we appreciate that.
Yes.
Final of this public hearing is to consider as CMA 2019-02, a request to amend the zoning map from manufacturing M1 to ag A2 on 32 acres at the intersection of 2,000, or 9,000 South and 7900 West. Mr. Burton?
Yes, Commissioners, this is a follow-up to the last application that we went over. If you look at the next staff report, it's page two, it'll show you the current zoning with the proposed zoning, which kind of outlines what Commissioner Frower was asking about, is you'll have this area being proposed to be rezoned as A2, which, if the general plan amendment is approved, this would, it would support this rezone.
Questions, Commissioners? This pretty much goes with the piece of...
Yeah, just covers the other part.
Right. Very good. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to comment to this? We see none. Very good, so we'll move on. So with this in mind, we'd like a motion now to close, thank you, the public hearing and reconvene into a public meeting.
Mr. Chair, I would move to adjourn our public hearing and reconvene as a public meeting.
Very good.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good, we're no longer in a public, or in a hearing, and we're now back to our public meeting. So, the requests are as follow. H2, request to vacate the public utility easement that we've talked about on lots 19, 20, 21, and Lot 2 of the GL subdivision of 35 feet, and change it to an easement of 10 feet. Are those, can I get a motion on that? Is there...
You want a motion on those individually?
Yeah, I think I'll do them individually.
Okay, so I would move to approve the agenda item H2, listed under public hearing, H7.
So, very good, I have a motion.
Second?
And I have a second.
That would be ordinance 11.
Fatima?
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Frower?
Aye.
And Chair Jenkins.
Aye. Very good. Next item was H3 under action item seven, request to consider and take action on GP 2019-01, I have a request to amend the general plan, anyway, and that's the one that Steve just explained to us.
So move.
That would be ordinance 30, I'm sorry, resolution 35.
Okay, hold on, number 35. So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Fatima?
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Frower?
Aye.
Chair Jenkins?
Aye. Very good. H4 is a request to consider and take action on that same piece of property as presented to us by Steve Burton.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve?
And that would be ordinance, sorry, that is an ordinance 12.
Hold on, I'm looking for a second.
I'm trying to decide if I want to hear the petitioner speak or not.
All right, I'll second.
And a second. Fatima?
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Frower?
Aye.
Chair Jenkins?
Aye. Very good, that's approved. Very good, Commissioners, we did good today. Of long, but we got through this, and time for Commissioner comments. Would either of you two care to weigh in today, or vent, or tell us what good or bad things we've done?
I think we've done some good things, I appreciate your comments on enjoying this great state we live in and area, and hopefully we can get out and enjoy a little more of this in the future, and I plan on taking your advice, thank you.
That's good, and I want to congratulate you on the addition to your new buffalo family.
Thank you, yeah, I will find out if it's a boy or girl, but I don't know exactly when, because I'm not going to find out individually.
You're not going to crawl out there and look, huh?
No, I've done that before, been there, done it.
That's true, you've also been ran by one of them, I remember the scars.
Yeah, that's right, me too.
One last thing.
Yes.
You know, these agendas in the close to three years, and look at who we have in the audience back there.
Look at that.
The chair of the Weaver County Republican Party, Ryan Wilcox.
Boy, we're blessed.
Welcome. But I wanted to bring up that, you know, in the last year, year and a half, a lot of times, we certainly never have two pages like we do today, and a lot of times it was one maybe spilling over to the back half of the first page. In recent months, since with Commissioner Frower and you, Commissioner Jenkins, we have oftentimes two, three, four pages, even five pages of things, we're getting a lot more done in a much more effective time, and I just, it's, that's intended to be a compliment. I really, I really like things like the public hearing today. We're fixing a lot of things that don't need to be, that weren't, well, that weren't necessarily...